Okay, call the meeting. Everybody stand for the public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that race, who's here in first?
I know.
Pursuant to the Own Public Meeting Act, the South Jersey Times and the Center were notified of this meeting. It was also posted in the municipal, as well on the website. You to take over.
Mr. Glacius?
Here.
Mr. De Cesare?
Here.
Mr. Gattano?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
Mr. Felice?
Here.
And Chairman Grebner?
Here. Okay, in the absence of Mike Garfo and Russell Leo, we see our two optimists, Andrew Hamel and Justin Felice. All right, gentlemen, the minutes of the previous meeting, is there a motion, any questions on it, first of all, and is there a motion to move? Make a motion. Motion by Richard Glacius and second by Andy Gattano, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any extension of the, and De Cesare?
Yep.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight is ZB 2307, I'm getting used to this, the new agenda, whatever we have here. ZB 2307, your name is Darren Bosco, please come forward. Mike, uh, all papers in order?
Yes, they are.
Darren Bosco, raise your hand, please, just sort of tell the truth about what you're about to give.
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Darren Bosco, and 95 Malaga Lake Boulevard.
Okay, Mr. Bosco, could you tell the board what you are applying for?
Okay, so I applied for a variance to build a pole barn on my property. The issue I was having was the pole barn couldn't go into the backyard because of my septic, so I applied to have it closer to the, with the setbacks from 25 feet to the side to 10, as well as 50 on the back, which I was met, I met that one.
So the only place to locate the pole barn is where you have it on this plan?
Yes, sir.
And where is the septic? Oh, this, I see this stuff. Why can't it be moved back?
Well, if I move it too far back, my, the way, um, my surveyor, he found the layout of the drainage for the septic, it would still be, the floor would still cover the pipes for the septic. Yeah, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's what it...
Just curious, how big's your house?
1,560 square feet.
And the pole barn is 960?
Yes, sir.
What's the purposes of the pole barn?
It's just to store some, I have two antique cars and a lawnmower, like lawn equipment.
No commercial operation out of it?
No, sir.
Any plumbing in it?
No, sir.
And how high is this one?
Uh, 10 feet.
10 feet to the?
To the, to the wall, yes, sir.
Ceiling of the ex, or, and the?
Yes, sir.
About 30 years. You're right.
Um, that I'm not sure, I have the, uh, I have the build sheet here. I don't believe that has it on the build sheet that I got through the pole barn company.
Basically, it's in the, it's in the RA zone, and this private, this is a private garage, there's conditional use standards for it, and it doesn't meet the conditional, the conditions of the conditional use, because it has to be in the rear of the lot, so that makes it a D variance. So the, it has to comply with the, it does not comply with the front yard setback standards, supposed to be 75 feet, this is setback 46.3 feet, so there's relief for that that's requested, and as Mr. Bosco indicated earlier, there's a side yard setback also, so it's been 20 feet, it's only located 10 feet off the side property line. Furthermore, and I don't know that we have standards from the zoning board, but he's only located 7 feet from the house, so that's something he's gonna have to address with the building department, if that meets the minimal distance between the structures, but that's not his only issue.
Is that, maybe he might also look out at that, might look at your front, fire.
Okay. So our, the way our ordinance is written for maximum height, height is permitted to be 15 feet, and that's measured from the mean point between the eve and the ridge. So with the 24 foot wide, I would think he would meet that 15 feet requirement, unless you can provide it to us tonight.
This is, uh, this is what I have from the pole barn company here.
I have it also, it doesn't indicate?
Yeah, it doesn't indicate it.
Why don't we, why don't we measure from the ground up to the peak, the height?
And we see this in all municipalities.
They do that?
That's the way height is generally measured. And we have, we always have that issue, we have to calculate height, because you gotta, you gotta figure out the mean distance between the eve and the ridge. So if, this, that would make it about 17 feet to the ridge, and he's probably less than that, given he's only 24 feet wide. So you'll need to verify that, because you're not getting a variance, you're not asking for a variance for that tonight, so hopefully you meet that.
Okay.
And that was in our review letter, you know, we did talk about that.
And who will review that?
Well, when he goes in for construction, when he pulls the building permit, he's gotta comply.
Check or?
When he pulls the building permit, plans. There's another portion of this application, I'm sorry, I forgot, uh, there's, there's two sheds, or a shed with a lean-to on it, the rear portion of that shed is being removed as part of this application, because Mr. Bosco doesn't need that for storage any longer, it'll be in this building, so some of the accessory structure size out there will be reduced.
There was an environmental report, just to, had some comments in it that probably should acknowledge.
I did.
You did? There was a comment regarding potential?
Stormwater runoff from water. I don't think this is gonna create any stormwater runoff, anything, just not creating major problems, you Dave?
I don't, um, however, the plans as proposed don't have topography on them, and he's 10 feet from the side property line, so that any runoff should not be directed off towards your neighbor, obviously. I don't remember, does this have gutter and downspouts on it?
Yes, sir.
So they should be direct, you can easily direct it away from your neighbor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion for you in the public? A second, that's pushing in a second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Anybody who can vote, like, be heard regarding this matter? Make a motion, we close. A second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay. Mike, any other comments?
Um, yeah, the only other last thing on the environmental was that you shouldn't have any security lighting on, it's gonna shine onto your neighbor.
Okay. Nobody here from the public, so. It seems like nobody's concerned about it, he must be a good neighbor. Just make sure your lights don't shine on these houses. Yes. Make a motion, we approve. A second. Motion for Dan De Cesare, second by Andy Gattano.
Okay, Mr. Glacius?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Gattano?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Felice?
Yes.
Chairman Grebner?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Glacius?
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is Noria Chambersen, JV LLC. Mike, everything in order with this?
Yes, we have it. Vast comprehensive notice, so this, so this one's...
Yes, a vast comprehensive?
It was a vast comprehensive.
Oh, okay. That is true. Good evening, good evening, everybody, hi, my name is Bob Baranowski, I'm the attorney for the applicant this evening, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Highland, Levin, Shapiro, and Marlton. We, we actually have been anticipating we would have seven members available tonight, I understand, as of the moment, we have six, and I just, before we kinda dive in, I wasn't sure if maybe somebody was just running late, and I know you have another application after us, and if anybody else was expected to be here, uh, we could...
I would assume if that person, there's only one that we know that would be, maybe he would've been here by now.
Gotcha, okay, and, and...
It may prove me wrong, but he's never done that before in the past.
Understood, I'll take, I'll take your, your experience with, with that, so...
So it's six here, and obviously you have the...
Right. We have the burden to ask five board members to vote in favor at a minimum, so I think, you know, it, in any case, in any use variance application, I'd, I'd, you know, look to have seven people available. There is a procedure, I haven't had a chance really even to discuss this with your attorney, but it's been, it's been approved in other cases, I understand where, if you want, because everybody is here, and there may be members of the public here that would like to speak on the application, rather than just postpone until next time when we have seven members, if it would be to the pleasure of the board, and if your solicitor agrees, it would be appropriate, we could put on the testimony, tonight you could hear from everybody, and then close the record, and then maybe allow a seventh member to listen to the recording, and then maybe take a vote at your, at your next subsequent meeting, when everyone's present, and, and take the vote in public, after the member has had a chance to listen to the tape, if, if that's agreeable.
We can't guarantee that that seventh member, or any of the other members, will listen to the tape.
Understood, that is true, also.
If you wanna move forward to six, that's fine, if not, postpone, is what I would say, Mike.
Yeah, we haven't done that before, a little bit reluctant, um...
Yeah.
This is not the same flavor, listening to the tape as seeing the testimony.
We wanna move forward, because it has been...
It has, we understand, it, it has been, so...
But we can't, you know, it's tough to guarantee everybody will be here.
It is, I understand everyone's fault is here, and I understand, so, uh, if, if you would indulge me just a moment, I could confer with the applicant, and I will be right back to the podium, and let you know where we stand, thanks.
You're doing fine.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant is just as eager to move forward as the board is, and as your professionals are, so appreciate your indulgence to have a moment to, to consult. So, understanding that, you probably have looked at the application a few times since it's been pending, just by way of a very, very brief overview, I think the board would be aware that we're proposing a, a floating solar array system, that would be located on a previously mined area of, of a mining pond, within an active, existing sand and gravel mining site, I think the board is probably very familiar with it, so, and you're also familiar with the fact that the facility and the mining pond, obviously goes across municipal boundary, part of this is in Franklin, part of it is in Monroe. On the Franklin side of things, the floating panels will actually run up and have the cabling run onto land, down the mining road, and that will be connected to the inverter, to be located on the Franklin side of the site, and then out to the grid. There are no changes proposed to the resource extraction operation, and the proposed floating solar array will in no way interfere with the mining operations. If this sounds like it's kind of like a unique type of thing, and, and you're, you could be assured, you're not the, the test subject for this type of proposal, there's actually a floating solar array up in, up in Sayerville, New Jersey, it's a 4.4 megawatt system, and it actually provides all the power to run the wastewater treatment plant up there, and there have also been similar floating solar facilities located on reservoirs in New Jersey and elsewhere, so this is becoming a type of use, trying to make, trying to make use out of areas that, you know, seem to be very well suited to have a passive use like this located there, to provide some renewable source of energy. The proposal requires use variance relief, because it would not only be an accessory use and provide some power generation to the mining operation, but it would also provide power to a community solar system, so that would be done through Atlantic City Electric, and because it would be a power generating type of operation, that would be another principal use, and that's not the type of use that's expressly permitted in this zoning district, so it does require a use variance, also because it would be like considered an additional principal use, that also is another reason why it triggers the need to request that use variance relief from the board. So, we have an engineer with us here tonight, our engineer Diana McMullin, she is going to explain the plan in detail for the board.
Why don't we swear in all your profession?
Absolutely.
So, the little, the little testifying tonight?
Sounds good, I'll have Diana McMullin join us to be sworn in, and also, Ms. Tiffany Morrissey is our planner, she's right behind us, and she'll give the...
The credentials?
Yeah, so you wanna have, give their credentials now, or just be sworn in and give their credentials when they testify?
Well, no, we'll do it all at once, every one, so we'll swear.
Great.
Raise your hand, please, swear to the common truth, common testimony, you're agreeing to it.
I do.
Let me get you ladies near a microphone, so that you could pick, be picked up on the record.
Name and, and address, your record?
Tiffany Morrissey, M-O-R-R-I-S-S-E-Y, 7 Equestrian Drive in Galloway, New Jersey, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, member of American Institute of Certified Planners, um, here as the planner for this project.
Were you here last month?
I was here last month. Yes.
Do we know you? Hey, Diana?
Diana McMullin, I live at 2708 Mapleview Drive in Odenton, Maryland, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, also a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, I've been practicing since 2001.
Thank you. Very knowledgeable, professional engineer.
Thank you very much, we, we appreciate that. As Diana's getting set up, I could just give you a little more background, she's gonna show you the location and the layout on the plan, we have some photographs to show you from the site for kind of a perspective on the location, and you'll see from the photographs that the solar array will not be visible off premises, it'll be heavily screened by the existing wooded mining buffer, which far exceeds the required buffer that's applicable to a freestanding solar array under the ordinance, there's no glare, there's virtually no noise, unless you're standing right next to it, in which case it basically sounds like a refrigerator operating, so it kinda makes that kinda la-hum, and that's from the inverter. So, and the Resource Extraction Company maintains a secure perimeter, will post the signage and monitoring for security, and again, with a heavily wooded buffer, it's not a similar situation where you'd have a freestanding solar array with a fence around it, it's well inside the perimeter of the operation. You'll hear also from our planner, that solar energy, I think you may already be aware, is considered as a renewable source of power, it's something encouraged by the Land Use Law, it's something encouraged by the State Energy Master Plan, and is defined under the municipal land use law as inherently beneficial use, so you'll hear our planner, Ms. Morrissey, speak to that, and that is part of the proofs of establishing the request for the use variance that she'll speak about this evening. I also just wanna point out quickly, that since we're in the Pinelands, we were required to obtain a certificate of filing, which we have, we've provided that to the board, that's dated August 22nd, 2022, and it raises no issues of any inconsistency with the, with the CMP, and as you'll hear, in fact, the regulations under the CMP provide that, in the rural development area where we are, solar energy facilities may occupy any previously disturbed portions of a parcel that have not subsequently been restored, so we meet that rule. And again, there's, the rule also allows clearing of additional land to accommodate solar energy facilities, up to 30% of the parcel county, both existing and proposed clearing, and we're well below that threshold, and there's really no need for any clearing for the solar facilities, either on top of the mining pond, or for the facilities to be located and connected on lands, so, and as you're also aware, in any event, should we obtain the board's favor this evening, and should we gain your approval, that approval in any effect does remain subject to final Pinelands review, and we'd have to get a no-call-up letter before the project can move forward, so, we do have the certificate of filing, we do obtain your approval tonight, we still have to go through final Pinelands review for a no-call-up letter, so we'll be subject to that as well. And, real quick, last thing, we do also have the review letter from your engineer, we don't really have any issues with any of his comments or questions, and we'll provide the testimony requested, whether it's requesting any type of waiver or other relief, we'll provide that testimony as well. I think that's about it, I think I kept Diana waiting there as long as we should, and, do you have a microphone nearby?
Oh, no, just that.
All right.
Just one other thing, obviously you haven't, has he straddled Monroe and Franklin? What's the status of?
Yes, thank you. So, we were approved already in Monroe, that was approved on September 21st, and I think you'll hear from a member of the public who's here this evening, who will present some comments on the application, he's adjoining property owner, he has objections to the proposal, he has already filed an appeal of that approval, but it is approved, and it's where we stand on things, so that's our adjoining property.
So is part of that solar array there in, in Monroe County?
Yes.
Are we looking at right now?
Yeah, the part in, the part in Monroe is entirely the floating part.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so that was approved by way of use variance, it's been appealed, whatever happens this evening, I'm not sure if that will follow a similar path, but we'll take one thing at a time. Thanks, Mike. All right, Diana, I'm gonna ask you just to be near a microphone when you talk.
That's fine.
So you might have to do a little pointing, I can see if I can have a laser pointer in there, but you can reference your plan.
Well, can you move that closer, if you want, I don't, I don't wanna block views, this is my only...
Right, I think it's...
I mean, there's not much to that plan.
No, there's not.
A second.
So, I think if you can, by reference to the plan, just try to speak into the microphone as best you can, and tell us about what we, what we see here, what's the, what are we looking at, we'll mark it as A1, and then let's talk about the layout that is on the Franklin side.
Sure, um, the plan, as shown, includes about nine acres of panel to be placed on the existing mine pond, in addition to that, there will be an inverter on a gravel pad, and then buried cable that goes from the inverter that's in the rear of the site, up to a power pole, an existing pole, that's down along 538. The total area of disturbance on this project is less than 5,000 square feet, so we are not looking at any stormwater management needs, and the permanent disturbance that this project creates is about 500 square feet, it's just that pad for the inverter, everything else is either floating or temporary disturbance to bury the cable, and then it'll be repaired. Access to that inverter, there's an existing gravel road in the mine system, and that's what we anticipate utilizing to get access back to where we have the pad proposed.
Okay, can you confirm what I said in my overview is accurate, that there's no glare, no noise, and so forth?
Yes, um, we have FAA approval, it, in regard to glare and noise, and they're solar panels, so there will be no noise at night, and any noise that is created will, I would imagine, be overwhelmed by whatever noise is happening on the mining operation during the day.
And, can you also confirm, as I stated, that the buffers surrounding the perimeter of the solar array will vastly exceed what's required by ordinance?
Yes, the, the mining buffers that are in place currently for the mine are greater than what's required for a, a land-based solar use.
And do we have some site photographs as well, where you can see the perspective of the view?
Um, I know it's hard to, it's hard to see, but there are numbers associated on this plan where each photo, the view is taken.
Is that A2?
A2, please, yeah. So just, can you tell us in the microphone what, what I'm marking as A2?
Sure, A2 is a variety of photos that were taken on a site visit, showing the existing condition of the mine and the area where both the panels will be going, as well as where the inverter is going. We also took a sample from Google Street View to show that from the road, from the closest location on Blue Bell Road, there's 300 feet of woods, and the pond surface is set down about 15 feet, so you will not be able to see the solar array as you're driving past the site.
I could kinda try to walk you through these, and if I'm talking loud enough, I think some, some microphone's picking me up.
You're picking your microphone up?
You hear me okay? It's all the years of coaching kids basketball and that.
It's the people in the back that you gotta worry about.
You hear me, can you hear me back there? Thank you. So the top left picture says "View of Site from the South," is that correct?
Yes.
And middle picture at the top says "View of Site from Center," is that correct?
Yep.
And then this one, the top right, says "View of Existing Hall, Road, and Vegetation?"
Yes, that's the road that will be utilized to access the inverter.
Thank you. And then picture four, the middle to the left, "View of Site from the West, Approximate Equipment Padded Location," is that correct?
Correct.
And then this one here, picture five, "View of East Side of Site," that's correct?
Yep.
And picture six, "View of the Site's Security Access Point and Existing Vegetation," is that correct?
Yes.
And seven, "View of Site Access and Existing Vegetation?"
Yes, and the, the photograph seven includes the poles where we will be tying in, to tie in to the power grid for the community solar.
And then picture eight, the last one on the exhibit, "View from North Blue Bell Road at the Thinnest Vegetation," from Google Earth, did I read that right?
Yes, you did.
When you say "thinnest vegetation," like, what, can you explain that?
Um, it's the narrowest point, if you flip back to exhibit A1, it's the narrowest point where you would be able to see the solar array from the road, it's up, like in the, in the U in blue, yeah.
This is location A.
And so that's where, it appears that the, the vegetation looks the thinnest, but you can't see anything onto the site from that location.
As Diana mentioned also, that there's numbers correlating the photos to the aerial site, and one was here, there's two, and three, four, five, back over here, six, and seven, so if anybody wants to take a further look at those, they do line up, so, visual buffer is, I think, pretty well established, correct?
Yes.
Are they still mining or the, the solar array?
No.
Go ahead.
The, the mining operation is completed on the western part of the site, that's why we're putting the solar there, they own property to the east, and they are actively mining on the east, but operations are completed on the west side of the site.
You can see from the location of the dredge on the aerial, that activity is happening over on the other side.
Just a question, how many more years of mining do they have tucked in?
As many as they can get. Yeah, and, so, to that point, you know, the mining operations are anticipated to be continuing, you know, consistent with the expected lifespan of the solar array, there are restoration requirements when the mining operations cease, and there's decommissioning requirements when this solar array would wind down and cease to, you know, produce power, so we're subject to all those requirements for decommissioning and restoration.
For as many years as you possibly can. For as many years as you possibly can, if they must have projections of how long they can mine this, is it five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?
Each year varies on what they need to, you know, extract, as far as for, you know, market demand, so they may take out less or more in any given year, so...
How long have they been in the area now that's all mined out?
They, we were here, I think, not that many years ago, and they have been there and continuing in that general direction for...
For a while.
For a while, so they're continuing to move over into that direction.
Two years.
So, they're gonna continue going that way, and, you know, I don't know, there's no specific projection on when, you know, mining operations would finish up at the site.
But they have an active mining permit that I think is, they just renewed in 2020?
Correct, and we have, right, and we have a conformance letter, I mean, our, it's a constant process of, obviously, maintaining those approvals, and having those renewed and reviewed by Pinelands, so that's actively and ongoing, continuing, and it's intended to continue into the future. And, again, consistent with the expected lifespan of the solar array, would be expected to last at least that long.
What is the expected lifespan of the solar array?
I think the expected lifespan is, what, 20 years?
20.
20, 25, yeah.
20 to 25 years.
Then what?
If it's done producing energy, it has to be decommissioned. And I think the decommissioning has to occur by regulation within 180 days after it ceases producing power, after it stops generating power. So, when it's time to shut down, it has to come out within six months.
Now, just one more question, unless I'm an electrician, but electricity and water sound to be a dangerous thing, so if somebody were to, a child or something, or get in there somehow, did they get electrocuted somehow?
No, no, so, you wanna address that? How it's safety-proofed?
Yeah, so, the mine site itself has its own safety patrol, as we mentioned, it's, the property itself is not fenced, but there's, the mine company has a safety guard on-site when they are not actively mining, there's, it's constantly being monitored. The inverter itself, we're proposing a seven-foot-high fence around the inverter itself, and the panels, I think the closest spot the panel is to the shore is 100 feet, so, somebody would have to get onsite, get all the way over there, like I said, to the closest point would be 100 feet, swim out to these floats, and climb up on it without being noticed by a security patrol, which we realistically don't feel is something that can happen.
And in addition to any of that, how are the panels constructed, and how are the panels and the electric current protected from causing a shock to anybody?
Sure, the panels themselves are made out of HDPE plastic, it's the same thing as a floating dock is made out of. HDPE is non-corrosive, it's made for this application, it's the same type of plastic that your milk jugs are made out of, so it's a safe material, it's not going to pollute the water by having these floats in it. There is, I've reviewed the specifications for the floats, they're specially designed with the intention of solar to be mounted onto them. All of the hardware is aluminum, which doesn't rust. The solar panels themselves are glass-framed in aluminum, they're all very safe, non-conductive, because the whole point of a solar panel is to absorb as much energy as possible, and then transfer it. There are cables that are tying the panels together, and then floating to the inverter. The floats themselves are anchored, so they're not gonna float away or around in the pond themselves. So, you know, as Bob mentioned earlier, this isn't the first floating solar application, this is something that is becoming more prevalent, and it's, you know, they know how to put these things together, so it's a new technology.
So, all the power generation components for the solar facility and the cabling and everything is insulated so that, you know, it protects anybody against being shocked from the panels or from the water?
Correct.
Is that, I think that's the question to make sure, right, so...
If you're in the water and touch the panel, you're safe?
You are safe. I'll let Diana answer that, I know the answer, but she's under oath, and she's our PE, so...
You're trespassing?
Yeah.
You don't deserve to be, yeah. We won't let, even trespassers, we won't allow them to be shocked.
Electrocuted, correct.
You said that community power.
You wanna address how the community solar program works? I mean, I'm a subscriber myself, so...
Yeah, so the way that the power arrays are set up is that first smaller array is feeding only the mining operation, it's behind the meter, so that's going to go to power the mining operation, the other two larger panels are going to be fed back into the power grid, that's why we need to connect to the pole out front, and it's gonna supply the same way that you can, you know, choose to select wind power, or from, you know, other solar providers, it just feeds back into the grid.
And if a company's gonna use the first smaller array for power generation, they have to have a battery storage or something on site as well, too, right? It doesn't direct feed from solar, or am I incorrect?
I'm not sure how it connects back into how they're using it.
No batteries?
No, okay, now there's no, okay, so there's no battery storage?
Okay, so, I think that's really the nuts and bolts of it, from the planning side of, from the plan side of it, and from the engineering side of it, if anybody else has any other questions, be happy to address them. Did that answer your question about the subscrib, yeah? Yeah, you get to select your energy provider, basically, on your bill, and so, you know, you can't know that you're buying that volt of power from this, but it comes out in the wash, so to speak. Sure.
Is there an access road all the way back to the pound?
Yep, well, to where the inverter is, it follows along to the side here, and then there's roads that go loops up and around to the backside here, to the upper part. These are essentially sand cliffs, it's about 15 feet high, which you can see in picture four here, and I can bring it up closer if you'd like to see, but there are access roads all through the mine.
Okay, and as far as, you mentioned maintenance, and to that point, it would be like one or two trips a month, I think, is what is anticipated to the site for maintenance and inspection?
Yes.
Okay, so, a total of 24 trips a year, that would be it?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanna touch on a few quick things from the board engineer's review letter, just to confirm, there's no changes to site grading, land disturbance is limited to concrete equipment pads and installation of underground cables, and just confirm that that is correct?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no additional site lighting proposed?
Correct.
All right, we talked about staffing and vehicular traffic, that's the two trips per month?
Yes.
For maintenance. We are currently in compliance with existing approvals for the resource extraction facility. We actually just had a letter that was issued to this board today by CME, confirming that we are in, confirming resolution compliance, it was, Dave had to send you a copy of that, but CME issued that letter today, you have a copy?
I have it, please.
Okay, thank you. So, we just had confirmation of that updated as of today, so we're in conformance with our approvals. We talked about, as noted in the review letter, a commercial solar energy system requires a 50-foot densely-planted perimeter landscape buffer, and the mining buffer, you confirmed well exceeds that, is that correct?
Yes.
And I think it's, I think it's a minimum of a 300-foot wooded buffer all around the mining activity?
I'm not sure what the minimum is, but we are providing a minimum of 300 currently on-site.
Right, I'm sorry, that's correct, we do provide that already, that's the minimum. That's the correct way to say that. And, we can confirm that Atlantic City Electric is, we're participating in their community solar program, so that will be the electric utility provider that we're working with. I think we're requesting a waiver from having a foot of at least eight feet high, a fence of at least eight feet high all around the perimeter of the installation, due to the described security measures that are in place, due to the existing mining buffer, due to the existing monitoring of the site to prevent trespassing. We can confirm, and we can submit, we do have a letter from the mining operator with regard to trespass prevention and safety measures, that does indicate security cameras are used, onsite security guards are used during weekends, there's a hunting club that does utilize portions of the property that are not involved in active mining, they have reporting to the mining operator as to any trespassing that they observe, and the entire property is posted with private property postings and prohibiting trespassing, and there have been zero reported incidents this year in 2023 of any trespassing, so we can confirm that that is indeed the case. Performance standards, there was a request to confirm that these panels can withstand a ground-level wind velocity of at least 90 miles an hour, due to the construction and the layout, as you described, of the floating panels, that they're on top of the mining pond surface, they're anchored, can you verify that that would withstand the 90 mile an hour wind velocity?
Yeah, but these panels will meet whatever state standards are in place for wind.
Gotcha. There are no hazardous materials involved in any of the operation, correct?
Correct.
And, we talked about noise, that the ordinance standard speaks to preventing any noise that would exceed 50 decibels measured from the nearest property line, and we can verify on the record that you will not hear 50 decibels at the property line, given the location of the only equipment that makes any noise on-site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we agree to be in compliance with any abandonment and decommissioning requirements set forth in the ordinance, which is the requirement to decommission within 180 days after the end of the project's operational life, so we agree to that?
Yes.
And we agree to post any required performance bonds, and we will provide a construction cost estimate to establish the amount of the inspection escrow and any bonding, correct?
Yes.
So, that was the last note in Mr. Shidig's letter, that was paragraph 14, and that takes us through all the comments in the letter, and we agree to comply accordingly, and...
Thank you, Mike, for commenting now, so you went through that very... Baronowski stole my thunder. I had got a letter dated July 13, 2023, I just wanted to recap quickly for the board, so we're talking about D-variances, as articulated, but there's a variance for the commercial, the commercial floating solar array, that's gonna be sold to the grid, that is not permitted in this zone, so obviously, a use variance is required for that. A use variance is required for the accessory solar energy system, that's the smaller one that's gonna provide energy for the mining operation, that also is an expansion of the non-conforming use, so that's another D-variance, and the third D-variance that we spoke about were more than one principal use on the site, so you're gonna have mining on the site, and you're gonna have generating of electricity that's gonna be sold back to the grid, so there's two, those two principal uses generates that third D-variance. If I heard correctly, the applicant is asking for relief from paragraph seven of our report that talks about the buffer, our ordinance requires a 50-foot densely-planted buffer, their testimony is there's already a 300-foot buffer provided, so they meet the requirements of that regulation. Paragraph nine, they're asking for a waiver, evidently, this mining operation has been existing for a long period of time without any fencing associated with it, the solar panels triggers the requirement for fencing around it, as if it was being put in a farm field per se. This is being floated on top of the mining pond, so they're asking for a waiver for the need to put up an eight-foot fence around the entire perimeter of the property, and we heard that testimony.
And there's no fence there at the pound?
Correct.
Correct.
And is that, does that warrant a state has to be eight-foot fence around the perimeter of the property?
It does.
Surrounding the solar structure?
Says perimeter of the property.
Okay. So, you're interested if they can just put one up around the actual floating dock and call that eight-foot, but I think they already have a moat around it.
Yeah.
Right.
They're proposing a seven-foot-tall fence around the inverter, where it's gonna change from DC to AC, that'll let that small inverter pad, that's gonna have a seven-foot-high fence put around it, but there is nothing, so that's a minor relief from the ordinance requirement, but, again, specifically, they're asking for relief from the eight-foot-high fence around the entire perimeter buffer. And what's the, how big is this lot altogether? These blocks? 500 and some odd acres? Am I wrong? It's massive.
It's...
And that's our ordinance, I don't know how you go along the, along the...
156 acres.
I'm sorry, 156 acres. I don't know how you go along the municipal boundary line, a little late, I don't know. Something to think about when you're considering that waiver request. And, of course, just like we heard a couple of times, there is a decommissioning bond that's required. It stops getting used, it's removed, and the municipality has a bond to make sure it is in fact removed. So, that's pretty much all the comments that were contained within my letter.
The maintenance plan submitted, I saw number 10, maintenance plan has not been submitted?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not address the maintenance plan, that was for a maintenance plan in terms of any required, like landscaping that would typically be put around it, we already have a requirement to maintain the wooded buffer that is required pursuant to the resource extraction, so we did not provide a maintenance plan for that particular specific purpose.
And your testimony is that that maintenance plan of the berms is already in...
It's in effect, right.
Part and parcel of the mining operation?
Mining, yes.
That we've got conformance, that it meets the requirements now?
Yes, sir.
Was, did you mention a security letter? When you were talking about security, was that something you're gonna remember sitting there?
Yep, I actually had that, I don't know if that was submitted, but...
I did not see a security plan, we heard testimony about the security.
I had that letter with me, I can circulate that, and we can mark it as A3 if...
Probably should, if you have that.
Okay, that would, yeah, that would, yeah, if you want, if you wouldn't mind, I can hold one copy of it, so, you have a copy, too? It should be in my copy, let's see, see how far we get with these. I'll mark it as A3, thank you. And, that's a letter dated September 25, 2023, that's being marked as A3.
So, these are all the things that you spoke about, security cameras, onsite security guard, hunting club, and it's posted?
Correct.
And zero incidents of trespass this year.
Okay, so, Mr. Shidig, I think, hopefully, that has addressed all the comments in your letter, including waiver requests with additional two notes that Mr. Borelli pointed out.
Correct, and these, and just as far as construction's concerned, these are anchored to the bottom of the pond?
The floats themselves, yes, they're...
Cables?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like, like, floating dock.
Yeah, I think there's an anchoring detail in the back of the full set, on the detail sheet.
And how deep are we here, any clue?
10 feet, I believe.
Really? Hard to believe.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, I think there's a varying, there's a varying depth there, we can...
It's substantial about cabling.
We can confirm that.
And you, and the testimony is that you will not be mining in and around this area to impact those anchors?
That's correct.
All mining will be done primarily in Monroe Township.
Correct, to the east.
East proportion of the site.
That's correct.
Okay. I have nothing further at this time.
You mentioned there's cameras?
Yes.
The mining company does. 24/7?
I think they're on 24/7, I think if there's a suspected incident, they go to... I think if there's a suspected incident, they go to view the cameras.
The cameras are only at the mine site.
Right, I don't know if they were in public portion yet. Okay. So, you know, the security cameras, they are where they are, and they would be directed as needed to make sure there are no incidents around the installation.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
If you have any other questions, why don't we move on to your question?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Morrissey, you've been sworn in, you've been qualified. I think you can get right into the part of your testimony.
Thank you. Good evening. So we're here because we request three variances, as Dave went through in his report. The first and primary variance is to have two principal uses on a property. This property is located in your Pinelands Rural Residential Zoning District, and it is the existing operation of a resource extraction facility that has existed for many years and will exist for many years going forward. The property is a nonconforming use, so there's a variance required for the solar that will service the actual mining operation. And then there's a variance to allow the community solar operation because you do not permit commercial solar arrays in the rural residential district. You only permit them in your industrial, commercial, or interchange commercial zoning district. These three variances are each in their own right, unique to this property. The D2 variance, which is the expansion of the nonconforming use, which is what I'd like to address initially, provides the, is the first panel, which is to the left side of the plan. The first set of panels, a smaller section. That's about a 1 megawatt facility, and that will provide 77% of the energy needs for Sylvie's operations, for the resource extraction operations. So it's providing a benefit to the existing operations that are occurring on the property. That is subject to a certificate of filing that was received from the Pinelands Commission, and at the point that the mining operations are done and they don't require any energy assistance from the solar panels, the panels have to be removed in accordance with the Pinelands approval. This is an expansion of a nonconforming use variance, which is a D2 variance because of the existing nonconforming status of the resource extraction operation. That's a different type of variance than a D1 variance, but they're very similar in terms of the positive and the negative criteria. In terms of the D2 variance and the expansion of the nonconforming use, the focus of the application has to be on the actual expansion itself, not the existing operation. But what does this expansion do that provides a positive benefit to the community, promotes the municipal land use law purposes, and takes into account the negative criteria of whether it creates a substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance or substantial detriment to the public good? And I'm going to address each of these different because of the different standards. So on the D2 variance, when we look at this application for the expansion of the nonconforming use, we're talking about providing energy resources that serve 77% of the existing operation's needs. Solar in itself is an inherently beneficial use under the municipal land use law. The municipal land use law specifically defines an inherently beneficial use as a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility or structure. And that was created and added to the municipal land use law specifically. So in terms of this D2 variance, this expansion, this 1 megawatt of the solar array that serves the energy needs of the existing resource operation, is an inherently beneficial use. But it also advances other purposes of zoning under the municipal land use law. In addition to being an inherently beneficial use and providing a benefit to the community, it also goes forward to promote the purpose of zoning, which is purpose, and to promote the utilization of renewable energy resources. Additionally, it promotes the purposes of zoning to provide adequate light air and open space on this property because of how it is located. Using this existing pond area and maximizing how the site is utilized by providing that energy resource to the mining operation promotes that purpose of zoning, providing adequate light air and open space because we're not encroaching on any other areas of this property. It's already a disturbed area, it's an open water area, and it provides an opportunity to provide that service back to the resource extraction operation. The D1 criteria, the fact that we have the commercial solar, which is the community solar is what it is. The community solar is a 4-megawatt facility. The community solar is actually split between Monroe Township and Franklin Township, and as you can see from the map and exhibit A1, the boundary line for the municipality basically cuts this property in half and goes down the center of the existing open pond area. The community solar, the 4 megawatts of the community solar will provide energy to about 500 homes. It'll provide enough energy to provide the needed resources to electrify and provide the resources to about 500 homes, give or take. Additionally, community solar is a little bit different than some other commercial solar that goes back into the grid because this is a program which requires that 50% of the energy that is created goes to low and moderate income customers. So it provides an additional benefit that it doesn't just go to the whole community, but it provides an additional benefit to low and moderate income customers in terms of providing an affordable energy alternative to customers. In terms of this combined two uses on the property, what we want to look at is how the site can accommodate the two uses. The intent of restricting multiple uses on a property is twofold. Specifically, in the Pinelands, a lot of that restriction deals with the septic management controls. This solar array doesn't impact any septic usage on the property. But more specifically, a restriction against multiple uses on a property has a lot to do with creating too much intensity of use on a property, where you have multiple uses that now you have too much going on in the property. This application is really a very minor change to the property. You have 24 trips coming into the property in a year, give or take for maintenance purposes. We're utilizing an existing area that's already disturbed in an innovative way to provide the natural energy back into the grid, and we're not disturbing any other portion of the property. The limited area that is necessary for the poles is on an existing roadway, and so the impact from this and the two uses on the property are minimal. They work very well together, and it doesn't create an overall increase in intensity of use on the property as it's already functioning in the community. So the solar being an inherently beneficial use, for the D1 criteria, when you have an inherently beneficial use, you presumptively meet, and you do meet, the positive criteria and promote the purposes of zoning. And then when you meet those purposes of zoning and you meet that inherently beneficial use criteria, you go through what is identified as the CECA balancing test, where you identify first, what is the public interest at stake? How inherently beneficial is this use? And then you want to identify the potential impacts from the proposed use, identify ways to mitigate the impacts from that use, and balance the public interest against the mitigated impacts. So in terms of how inherently beneficial and how much of a public interest is advanced from this application in terms of that inherently beneficial use aspect, solar arrays or photovoltaic energy facilities, as it's listed in the municipal land use law, was so important to be, to the aspect of inherently beneficial use that it was specifically identified in the definition of an inherently beneficial use. There are uses that are inherently beneficial based on other objectives that are not identified. This use is specifically identified, listed up there with hospital and school and childcare center and group home. The municipal land use law was also amended to provide a provision to promote a purpose of zoning, to promote utilization of renewable energy resources. So not only do the municipal land use law say that solar is an inherently beneficial use, it says when you're promoting renewable energy resources, you're also advancing a purpose of zoning. And lastly, the municipal land use law was amended to specifically provide that solar uses should be a permitted use in industrial zoning districts and on resource extraction sites. So there's been an amendment to the laws that really deal with solar in terms of it being a public benefit and a public interest. Further, New Jersey adopted their 2019 New Jersey Energy Master Plan, which talks about energy resources and not renewable energy, and has various goals and objectives. It includes a goal to provide 100% clean power by 2050, and as part of that goal, to maximize the local onsite or remotely-sited solar development and distributed energy resources by 2050, and specifically underneath that, another bullet point that says, to continue to grow New Jersey's community solar program, which is what this application is doing. So not only is this addressed in the municipal land use law as an inherently beneficial use, but the New Jersey Energy Master Plan talks about the importance of providing natural resource energy sources by 2050 and promoting community solar. All of those put together really go as to what the enhanced benefit is from this application. There are other purposes of zoning that are advanced through this application. I already talked about the promotion of the utilization of renewable energy resources, but it also promotes two other purposes of zoning based on how this application is addressed. First, and I talked about it with the expansion of the nonconforming use, it promotes the purpose of zoning to provide adequate light air and open space, but I also believe it promotes the purpose of zoning to promote a desired visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And specifically, creative development techniques. Providing solar on an open water area of a mining operation creates an effective use of land. You're not, and it's not as much as a use of land, it's the open water. It's not resulting in the need to take down trees to provide for solar, or loss of farmland to provide for solar. Here, we're working with property that's already disturbed, that provides an adaptive use of an existing disturbed area, and allows us to advance those purposes of renewable energy resources in the state of New Jersey. This property is unique. It has that split jurisdiction between the two municipalities, but it's also unique because it has existing setbacks and improvements in operations that allow for this location of the solar to be screened and buffered from the surrounding area without creating an impact to the surrounding area. The closest point to the inverter is about 340 feet from the property line. We have an existing maintenance plan requirement for the berms and landscaping that are associated with the resource extraction property, and the solar panels floating at the elevation in the wet pond area is much lower than the grade at the property lines, so you're not going to see them from the edges of the property. They will be adequately screened and buffered from the surrounding area and create no impact to the surrounding area. In terms of where else have we seen things like this? We have seen solar arrays floating, you heard our attorney talk about in Sayerville, but even more recently, this past year, there was an approval in Short Hills, which allowed for New Jersey American Water to install an 8.9-megawatt floating solar array on a water reservoir. So any concerns, this is the water that people drink. So these floating solar arrays are located on the drinking water reservoir and providing energy back into the grid. So it's not unusual, and it is becoming more commonplace. It is not unique to this property here. Additionally, there are other municipalities that are now looking to provide opportunities to permit solar on open water areas because it takes away from the stress and the demand for the land area that could be used in an otherwise more beneficial fashion. In terms of the negative criteria, is there a substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance or the master plan, and is there a substantial detriment to the public good? This application, in my opinion, really advances a significant part of your master plan. Your master plan was last reexamined in 2013, and it dealt with solar. Specifically, it talked about amending and reviewing the various legislation that was enacted by the state of New Jersey relative to renewable energy. It identified that 2009 legislation, which amended the municipal land use law to permit wind and solar in industrial zones on lands of at least 20 acres, and it went on to recommend that the land development ordinances be updated where necessary to bring them consistent with the new laws and regulatory changes as referenced. The master plan did not specify any additional areas where commercial solar would be permissible aside from a statement to update the ordinances. Your ordinance provides that commercial solar is permissible in your interchange commercial area. This is not in your interchange commercial area, but when you read further in your master plan, it stressed the intent of not clearing large forested areas for new solar and providing screening and buffering of solar uses. So this site, while it's in a rural residential zone, it's on a pre-existing resource extraction site. The location as a floating array eliminates the need for any clearing, and its location is screened from view due to the grade changes and the setbacks, substantial setbacks that exist to the existing wet pond area, all advancing the intent and purpose of the master plan issues, to provide appropriate locations for solar without losing your land area. This meets that requirement in a way that may not have been thought of at that point in time in 2013. In terms of the zoning ordinance, we did look at your zoning ordinance, and Mr. Scheidegg in his report talked about the standards that are required for your commercial solar if it were in a permitted location. Your ordinance provides specific standards regarding commercial solar under section 253-83.2 for commercial solar energy systems. Item B of that says, "Commercial solar energy projects must seek a use variance in site plan approval when they do not meet the above conditions and are not located in the interchange commercial." And there's standards provided for when you seek that use variance, which are consistent with the standards for the interchange commercial zone. And that requirement includes locating the ground arrays setback at least 150 feet from all property lines, where the closest point is 340 feet here. Ground-mounted arrays shall not exceed 20 feet in height. They're floating on the water, so they're not exceeding that 20 feet in height. A 50-foot-wide densely planted perimeter landscape buffer that includes a combination of evergreen trees and shrubs with a six-foot-tall black vinyl-coated chain-link fence located inside the landscape perimeter. We are requesting to not provide the fences, you heard from our engineer. We have substantial vegetation surrounding the property, and you have the security measures that are in effect. We are fencing the equipment that is on the land side of the inverter area that's on the land side, so that, make sure that that is protected. The intent of the screening and buffering that's required in your ordinance is more than adequately addressed on this existing site without any need to enhance that. The ordinance requires that solar, that no more than 80% of the total lot area shall be utilized for a solar energy system installation. You heard this is 156-acre property. The solar panels equal about nine acres, I think we said, way less than 80% of the entire property. Solar energy systems shall be designed using features and colors and materials so as to blend into their settings and avoid visual blight. These will have the natural colors, and again, it's not even going to be seen in the area because of the grade change in the distance from the property lines. And they should not be used for the display or of advertising, which is not the intent here either. So in terms of your zoning ordinance requirements and whether there's a substantial impairment to your zoning ordinance by allowing for this community solar project on this property, as well as the expansion of the nonconforming use for the solar to provide the energy to the existing operations, I believe there is no substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance and zone plan, and in fact, that this provides a unique opportunity to further the goals and objectives of your master plan and your zoning ordinance relative to solar operations. And then lastly, is there a substantial detriment to the public good? And in this case, I don't believe that there is. We are providing a decommissioning plan, and there will be a performance bond to go along with that decommissioning plan. Our operations have been approved by the Pinelands Commission. We are governed by the Pinelands Commission. We have a certificate of filing. All aspects that are required under the Pinelands Commission will be adhered to, so we're consistent with the comprehensive management plan. We have very little impact in terms. We have very little impact in terms of traffic and trips, one trip or two trips per month for maintenance. There is no impact to the mining operation. And when you look at how this doesn't even require the clear cutting or removal of any trees in order to provide this operation on this property, it clearly shows that there is no substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, the benefits of the community solar in terms of providing that aspect to affordable families really enhances what that potential detriment could be and makes it more of a positive, in my professional opinion. So in summary, we have the three use variances. The D2 variance for the expansion of the nonconforming use as well as the variance to allow more than one principal use on the property and the variance to allow the commercial solar, which is not permitted in this zone. All of these uses, and the solar itself is an inherently beneficial use and so it advances the purposes of zoning, but it also advances other purposes of zoning in the event you feel that that is necessary to identify. The property meets the positive criteria and the benefits from the application would substantially outweigh the detriments. The negative criteria does not rise to creating a substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance and master plan and it does not create a substantial detriment to the public good. It is different than what is otherwise permitted, but given the existing use on this property and the ability to wrap this use into that existing operation without creating an impact to the surrounding area, demonstrates that this is a positive development plan and creates a good zoning alternative for the subject property and meets the purposes under the municipal land use law for the D2 and the D1 variances. I think that's everything. You're welcome. I'm sorry I was so long. I just wanted to get enough on the record. Well, then that adds to no substantial impairment and detriment to the public good. So thank you.
My name is Honora Kelly. I live at 2357 Blue Bell Road in Williamstown. I'm just a half a mile down the road from Sahara Sands. Yes, I'm going to try to go fast here. Floating solar arrays are becoming more popular because of lack of land, but it's a relatively new technology and the negative effects have not been fully studied. But the studies that have been conducted have shown that there is serious potential for negative impact on the environment and to humans. As was mentioned, Franklin Township and Monroe Townships are located in the middle of the pinelands, a protected area since 1979. Why are our townships willing to pose a potential threat to such vulnerable area and to the residents here? I believe Sahara Sands has plenty of acreage to handle solar panels on land, yet they're going to put it on water. I understand the why they might like that, but if the panels do sustain damage, who will ensure that the toxic cadmium and tourilium will not contaminate our groundwater? Cadmium and tourilium can cause kidney, heart, skin, lung, and gastrointestinal system damage in humans. And the quarry pools are 68, 80 feet deep. They're filled from our groundwater. Plus the fact that our township lands are porous gravel and sand, which easily allows groundwater to travel for miles. So it's very possible that wells several miles away from the quarry would be affected if there was damage and it was not taken care of. Not only is there a risk of contamination to our groundwater, animals, and ecosystems, there's a possible threat of fires. It might be small, but the climate seems to be changing and Canada didn't have a good year. As more, are more arrays planned? And if so, is there a limit to how many Sahara Sands can install with or without letting the residents know? Although decommissioning was mentioned, will our townships oversee and ensure the proper disposal of decommissioned or damaged panels so that they are not left to leach toxic waste into the water and soil? Listen, we live in a rural area. We have been overlooked. If you go down our roads, you see that we've been a dump site, toxic and otherwise from out of towners or whatever. Even people who have properties, you know, they've got their old appliances in the back. But will our townships take control of that or oversight? Maintenance was mentioned, but also will our townships, who have a vested interest in the health of the land, build oversight into whichever solar plan is taken? That requires periodic outside oversight for compliance through inspection, visits to the facility, inspection of materials, and water tests. Now, the reservoir that was mentioned before, I'm pretty sure that's in a more populated area than we have and I'm sure that it's not behind trees. I know my time is up, but I'm sure it will also receive a lot more attention because it is so visible. I have concerns. It's hidden.
My name is Joseph Carr. I live on 4330 Cole Smill Road on the corner. I've been there for 30-something years before the sand pit was actually put in. Since they put it in, he went to the Williamstown Board in front of you people, but the board members in Williamstown in line and said the sand pit was only 10 feet deep and there would be no way that anything could leach into my water system. When any of yous would know that 60 feet, you're into the third aquifer. So anything that leaches into that sand wash goes into my well. I test my water all the time because I have tropical fish. And if anybody knows tropical fish, you gotta make sure the acid, the pH and all. Since the sand wash has been there, there's thousands of geese land in there and the ammonia level in my water has been raised. So you can only imagine if one of them solar panels leak into my water system, what I'm going to be ingesting. These people ain't there drinking the water. If they want me to break a solar panel and run some water in and they want to drink a cup of water out of it, I'm glad to let them do it. But for me, I don't want to be drinking the water there. That back road they're showing, right here is the road that comes from the lakes that all the kids go there swimming all the time. They don't want to tell you that, but the people in the front can't see it because the sand berms block the vision to the back. So they don't even know what's going on to the backside of it. The cameras are only mounted on the front to make sure no one goes and does damage to the sand quarries up in the front. They don't monitor nothing in the back. So they can tell you that they got monitoring and they got security and all, but I've been there for 30 years. Quads are riding through there all the time, every day. There's no fence stopping them. There's an actual main road going to the lakes in the back. And they're telling you that it's safe for people to be there and no one's there when there's actually people swimming there all the time. 30, I mean, that thing is going to be like a diving board for kids. They're going to swim out there and get on that thing and jump off them solar arrays like it's a diving board. It's 60 feet deep. They ain't got to worry about bumping their heads. They've already had calls for a couple of kids that were stuck in the front sand where the sand leaches back in, it's soft. They had to come and rescue the kid out of there because he was stuck in it. So he can tell you, oh, there's no people there. It's safe and it's secure. No one can get hurt. But he is surely not monitoring the property the way it should be monitored. So I'm sure all you people understand that anything that's in your aquifer is going to be in everybody's water system. You were complaining, you were worried about the fiberglass coming out of the pool place over here and that's just air emissions. It's still got to leach through 60 feet of soil before it can hit your water system. This is in my water system and they can go over in Piney Hollow Road where they already have a lot cleared of over 100 acres and put the solar array there. They don't need to put it on our water system. Thank you.
Ralph Travoloni, Marshmallow Road, Malaga. Prior gentleman spoke about geese. The applicant did a wonderful job in the presentation saying how the environment's going to have minimal impact. The environmental commission said the animals won't be affected. Prior gentleman mentioned that there are geese that go in the water and he'd seize coliform or whatever the geese leave behind, bacteria. I've done some research on the topic and make believe you're a goose flying in the air and you see a lake and you want to land. Well, these solar panels look like water. And when the geese try to land, they kamikaze themselves and they die. I really don't care about geese. I don't care if they all die. That's fact. I don't care for them. But the sad news is, if this should be passed, I would like to see in the resolution that when they do their maintenance, that they call the dead geese out of the water so it doesn't further contaminate the water. There's been research, fact check me, the geese do not tell the difference between a glass solar panel and water. And when they come down the land in the water, so they think they're landing on the glass and breaking their neck and dying. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. Dave Marshall, 67, New Road. David Marshall, 67, New Road, Malaga. The security guard, and I'm not saying he's not a, or she, is not an extremely fit individual, but if a kid's on one side of the property, security guard's on this side, unless he's Usain Bolt, he's never going to catch him in time. It just, it'd be impossible. You just, children are going to get where they're going to get. It's just a reality of how it is and you can see that all over in different towns as kids, and I'm sure most of us in our youth have been on in areas we shouldn't have at times and it's very easy to do that. You had mentioned about a material being noncorrosive, but that also doesn't make it nonconductive. Aluminum is an extremely good conductor. But then you said a lot of the materials aluminum. Couple of things that I'm not sure this, these are questions you guys may have the information on, they may be able to write it. The plastic that's used, you mentioned is the same as what's on a milk jug. At 158 degrees, that milk jug starts to give off BPAs. Solar panels can run on average at 150 degrees on a normal summer day. So you're eight degrees shy of being hazardous. So if it is that material, it can cause harm over time. And it takes a little while. It takes, says, an average of four weeks at that temperature. It'll start giving off enough corrosive material to cause harmful effects in fetuses in the elderly at that point. So just something to think about. You had mentioned about there's no battery, but the inverters, of course, are very susceptible to flooding issues. This is being mounted near water. What is protecting the event of a flood of that inverter or the berms or whatever? I don't know what's being put around it, but just something to think about. And that's it. Thank you.
My name's William Blaney. I'm the neighbor to the property and I'm also an attorney. So I have brought some exhibits, which I'd like to hand off if I could. I want to be sworn in because I want to make sure my testimony's on the record. Yours has an attachment of the plans that's on the back. There's a hard copy there, so you can blow it off. There's probably more excerpts. I do. Sure. William Blaney. My home address is 1764 Adams Court in Turnersville. I own what they call Zero Lakeside Drive, which is Block 9301, Lot 1. It's 68 acres directly above the sand mine, 1,700 feet along the sand mine, maybe 1,800 feet along the sand mine. I also own 2424 Blue Bell Road and 1519 Magnolia Drive, all in Monroe. So I'm the direct neighbor to the sand mine. I can see the sand mine. I can see the water from my property. The buffer that's there, it's oak. Gets to winter time, you can see right through it. But I'm here really to discuss what I think is the problem with the project. If you look at Exhibit A in the packet I've given you, that is the New Jersey State Pinelands Statute, which, it's my understanding and belief that bars placing this solar array on the property. Under the statute, you're not allowed to place a solar array on a project or a resource extraction site that is subject to reclamation or restoration. This site is subject to restoration. It's actually, should have been started to be in restoration already because they told you they're done mining that side. As soon as they're done mining that side, they're supposed to be restoring it. They're supposed to be bringing the grade in to make it non-dangerous. Right now, it's got at least 15-foot-high walls on the side of it, which are just sand or dirt. So they haven't done any of that. They're required to do it. You will see under subsection B of what I've given you, that is the restoration standards, which tells you what they have to do as far as restoration. Restoration's supposed to have been a continual process from the start of mining. When they're done a section, they're supposed to be restoring a section. They actually have a restoration plan that they've provided when they got their site plan approval, which indicates each section that they're doing and when it's supposed to be restored. That is under subsection F of the exhibit I gave you. And it's the last page. It's a little hard to read, so I gave your solicitor a PDF copy, which he can increase the size on and you'll see what they're supposed to be doing. They haven't done that. If you look at Exhibit C that I've given you, because we've had some discussion here today about how long this is going to take, you'll see these are the minutes from a planning board meeting where they got approval to expand the mine. They said 15 years back in 2019. Today, they're telling you 25. Why are they telling you 25 today? Because those solar panels will last 25 years. It ain't even going to last 15 before they mine out if they continue mining it appropriately. They have, and what they showed you here in this picture, that's not the sand mine today. That's the sand mine two, three years ago. This sand mine is going all the way across and down. It's taken up at least five or six additional lots. They bought them all up. And that's, yeah. I have no problem with the mining operation. It's just with the solar array. I bought it with a mining operation there. I have no right to complain about a mining operation being there. When they did their expansion, I didn't come and complain. My problem is they're now putting a second use on there and they're going to leave this property, which should be restored, which they've indicated. It's not that, sir. There's a portion of it that's sad, but what it is, it's they're not allowed to do it. Correct. I went there. I'm the one who initiated the suit against them over there when they passed it, that he mentioned earlier, because I don't think they were allowed to do it. I think they're statutorily barred from doing it. And I own good acreage up along there. I own at least 12 acres that are high and dry up there. And they want to put a solar, commercial solar panels there, which is a residential zone. My zone above it is .6 of an acre to build on. And I have 67 acres up there. On their roofs and small areas and small mounts. They don't, this is big. Yeah, but this is not nine acres big.
And as far as like a closure plan, who's that regulated by? Is that regulated by the state, Dave? De-commissioning operations?
Decommissioning plan is part of the site plan approval.
But I mean, who regulates? Who inspects it? Who goes there and says, you know?
Technically, it's part of the site plan that was approved by this board. Not this board, the planning board, I apologize. It was the planning board in that case. But nobody's been doing it. And they, and they haven't reclaimed. You can ask them. They haven't reclaimed it.
I thought they had to resubmit plans every so often.
Correct.
And our municipal engineer, probably, can do that.
Probably.
If they don't do it, municipality can pull the bond and do it. Again, not likely, but they would, since it's an ongoing mining operation, they need to come back to this, to the planning board.
They would be relaxed.
Periodically, correct. And then, that's when it should be addressed.
The last one was in 2019. It's the gentleman's Exhibit D. So they, their permit's good, it was reviewed as good until October 15th, '24.
And an expansion in '21 as well.
So they're still within their, so would review for that five-year.
But that was for new spots that aren't shown even on this map. This is old. That stuff was mined out 10, 15, 20 years ago and it hasn't been reclaimed. The other thing I wanted to point out, and you'll see in here, they have provided when they got their last site plan approval, they provided a drainage narrative, that's Exhibit G, that says if, if that lake overflows, the overflow goes across my property. So my property has streams running it that go down to Victory Lakes, Sunset Lake, and both Victory Lakes. So that'll flow right down into there. I don't think your Environmental Commission looked at what happens when that water goes into those environmentally sensitive areas and what happens out there.
But you knew that when you bought your property, you said the mining operation was already there.
The mining operation was already there, but not the expansion, which is where they said, where they put in the drainage narrative that said it goes over my property. But I didn't object to it then, because there wasn't potentially toxic solar panels on it. It was a mine. I provided you also the fact that this is all DEP property here. It's Wildlife Management Area on both sides of this same line. So if you go down Blue Bell Road, there's part, there's part of White Oaks there, there's part of White Oaks below it as well. Actually, there's a couple houses here, one lot that leads you right into White Oaks, and White Oaks is all behind the houses on the other side of the road. So environmentally, that's an issue as well. I've heard some testimony here today about a hunting club. I got guys that hunt my property. There's no hunting club there. It's my neighbor and his two daughters, that's who leases that property to hunt. There's no hunting club out there. I've heard testimony that there's no trespassers out there. There are trespassers out there all the time. I butt right up to that mine. There are people out there all the time. If I go out there on a Saturday to walk my dog, there are ATVs riding up and down those roads. They're usually going across my property to get there. So I see the tracks all the time going there, and that's what it is. So the fact that they're saying that there's no trespassers and they provided some letter from somebody who says he's monitoring, it's 250-some acres, all right? This portion here might be 160, but that's 250 acres. And they're mining where you can't even see on this map. So there's not a team of people monitoring this. They're out there, they get in the water. I see them mostly on ATVs, is what I see them doing. And they're zipping in and out and back and forth. Essentially, my problem with this is, I don't think statutorily they're allowed to do it. I don't think it's an inherently beneficial use because of the statutory bar, and I don't think they've met the requirements. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. None of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Renee Pistoli, Leo Party, 2787 East Grant Avenue. Good evening. I did go to the Monroe Township meeting.
Can we get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Renee Pistoli Leo Party. P-I-S-T-I-L-L-I, L-E-O-P-A-R-D-I. I was at Monroe Township's meeting, and during their meeting, the gentleman said, and the board, that the majority of the panels were going to be placed in Franklin Township. But according to Mike, when I talked to you, you said, "No, that's not true." So Monroe Township's under the impression that the majority is here, and we're under the impression that the majority is in Monroe Township. So obviously, there's miscommunication somewheres, either by them to Monroe Township.
The line doesn't, my line, so...
Well, as the attorney just said to you, that's old. So how do we?
The power lines, this isn't old.
So I'm going to, I was at the meeting and he was there at the meeting when they said the majority was in Franklin Township, and that's why I came to you. And I said, "How is that possible? We talked about this before. It wasn't supposed to be the majority." So I think that maybe there should be some kind of communication with Monroe Township's board and your board to figure out exactly what the plans are. And more concerning than that is, they did a, less than a one-year study on safety and children. If you've been to Kitty College, you've done it before. So this is just another Kitty College waiting to happen. A one-year study on safety? That should have been their top priority, is the safety of our young children that are running back there on four-wheelers, and the safety of our drinking water. That, that's all I have. It's just, it's concerning. Thank you.
Anyone else, else like to be heard?
I want to be seen.
One more thing?
Yeah.
Oh, he's not going to let me go.
You have, anyone else, any comments? Not that they're giving motion to both?
I think we actually closed both.
Motion by Dana DeSantis, secondly, I'm in favor. I closed. Would you, the applicant, I think they get any comments?
Sure, thank you.
Before you get started?
Yes, sir.
I have to address some of the comments by some of the members of the audience, which one of them, the main one being, people are obviously trespassing on that property.
So, I, I think you've heard, I'm not sure what you've heard in some, in some respects, but I, I think the types of issues that have been alleged to be occurring on the property will certainly be addressed and monitored. And, you know, hearing these comments, this is not what the mining operator is, is seeing. And I cannot fathom that the mining operations are, are ongoing with the pond and the mine being a virtual playground. I can't imagine a scenario where that is occurring.
Are you out there?
Yeah.
Okay. What are the hours of operation?
The mine, I don't, I don't have the whole full nuts and bolts mining operation details to present.
I'm sure it's an eight-hour, 10-hour?
It's a work, it's a workday operation, and then there's, you know, monitoring.
But let's put it out there, people go on there when they're not operating.
And if that's occurring, they shouldn't be, and there's going to have to be increased monitoring in this area to ensure that that won't happen. So if the board feels that's a necessary condition in light of the fact that this isn't, you've heard extensive testimony, this is an inherently beneficial use, and Ms. Morrissey told you how the board deals with that in the use variance context, is if you perceive there to be some negative issue that needs to be addressed, that is to be addressed by way of something you feel appropriate as a condition to mitigate that type of issue. So I would submit to you, Mr. Iglesias, that would be an appropriate consideration if you feel that should be part of the board's decision. I would certainly acknowledge that. Okay? There, if I, if I may, if that, if that does address your comment?
I answered my question.
That's good? We're good? Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure, I was jumping right ahead to the legal issue that Mr. Blaney had, had, had raised. I wanted to make sure the board understands my position on that. I think you've heard it in my overview, but I can very briefly reiterate it to you, that I think he's incorrect about his reading of the statute. I think he gave you all the statutes and the things that he referenced. You can, you can read it for yourself, but the statute does not, he's, he's summarizing it for you and characterizing the statute as prohibiting the location of solar voltaic facilities on resource extraction sites, and that's just, just not correct. And this portion of the statute he gave you actually specifically provides that the Pine Lands Commission is to adopt rules governing specific issues about locating sites within the Pine Lands. And, and they did that. And that's codified at New Jersey Administrative Code 7:50-5.36. And sub-paragraph D in that regulation specifically pertains to the Pine Lands Management Area where, where we're located. So you have to be careful when you go through these rules and regulations of Pine Lands, because there are certain things that will apply only in certain management areas. In the management area where we are located, it specifically states at D1, "Solar energy facilities may occupy any previously disturbed portion of a parcel that have not subsequently been restored." And as far as the restoration plan is concerned, the, the pond is never going to be filled back in. Everything that was taken out of the pond's going to remain a pond. And in some of the testimony that was referenced and the minutes that are referenced, you can see, and, and the planning board is aware, of course, and the record of our approvals will demonstrate ultimately, the intended end-use at some point, when mining is ceased, will be, you know, some kind of like open space, maybe green acres will, will take over the property when, when the mining is done. At which point, everything that's here will have to be decommissioned, the rec, the reclamation plan, restoration plan, the decommissioning plans, all the approvals that are pertinent to the site, the local approvals, Pine Lands, they all require specific things to be done, and there's bonding for all of it. So not just for the solar facilities, but there's bonding for the mining reclamation plan as well, and a restoration plan. And I reference to you, and you have it in your records, that, just as of today, we have a letter from CMA, the township engineer, confirming that we're in compliance with our approvals. So I don't think that is really an issue that's really subject to really much further debate. If, if you want to hear any further about why I think that Mr. Blaney's legal interpretation is correct, you know, we, we can give you chapter and verse. Ms. Cuviello's done some, some research. Morrissey, I never stop calling you Cuviello. I apologize. We, we go, we go back a long way, but Ms. Morrissey has done the research, and from a planner's perspective can take you through the proverbial breadcrumb trail and point you to exactly why, in further detail, that Mr. Blaney's interpretation that this is somehow prohibited is incorrect. I think the regulation I pointed you to is kind of the shortcut, and an even shorter version of, of why he's wrong is that the Pine Lands has already reviewed the application before you even heard it, just to verify that the board can proceed to consider the application. And I think we can all be assured that the Pine Lands Commission felt this was prohibited. We would not have received a certificate of filing at all. We would not, we wouldn't be here. At the very least, I think they would have issued an inconsistent certificate of filing explaining there was a discrepancy subjecting the, the, any approval to their final review, which happened, which is still in place anyway. And as we said in the, in our opening, any approval that we may receive from the board this evening, whatever conditions there may be, does still also remain subject to the Pine Lands Commission review, and no call-up letter will need to be issued. So there's belt and suspenders in place across the board that any activity that's approved by the board will be consistent with the Pine Lands Management Plan. So I think in general, if I can allow that to respond to Mr. Blaney's comments and to the public's comments, in, in general, I think you've heard the testimony that we've offered, that the, this type of use has been installed throughout the state, throughout the country. It satisfies and promotes the purposes of the state's energy master plan. If there's any further information, you know, you'd like about, you know, safety, I think we've provided some of it, but, you know, the cabling, the construction certainly designed to avoid any negative impacts for safety and the environment. These things are located on reservoirs, on wastewater management treatment, floating, you know, settling ponds, and that's just not going to happen on a reservoir if that is going to create any kind of contamination. I would tell you that, that, that Water Authority would certainly have made sure before putting it on a reservoir, that none of those adverse consequences could be expected. I think they'd be exposing themselves to some huge liability if they didn't. So I think the board can consider that in determining that this is a, a safe use to be put on top of the mining pond, and will not have any adverse consequences to anybody's drinking water. So if there's any other questions, we're happy to answer them before the board deliberates. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. You have a question, gentlemen? Mike, anything?
No, I think you had a very thorough explanation of the positive and negative criteria by Ms. Morrissey, which was the correct recitation of the standards. As far as whether they were met, it's up to you, but it was a correct recitation of the standards regarding the gentleman indicating that this is not permitted. I tend to agree that if we have a Pine Lands certificate of filing, I would think Pine Lands would have pointed out if it was not permitted. There's a testimony. Well, the only, the only problem I have with this whole project is the fact that I was a parent and grandparent in this town, and there's a lot of kids go swimming in that pond, a lot. Okay? I'm not fully comfortable if there's not a fence around that whole project.
I, I, look, I, I'm a parent. I appreciate your, your concerns, and, you know, if, I think your point goes to Mr. Iglesias' point as well. I think if the board feels that has to be more carefully monitored, I don't think, based on what happens now, if, if the allegation is that people are getting in there through 300 feet of woods, I don't think a fence at the end of the wood line is going to further preclude that. You know, people will cut it open, they'll jump over it. So I think if, if, if mon, if, I'm sorry, I think if monitoring is the issue that is desired in terms of mitigating against that type of concern, then I think monitoring could be the appropriate condition.
I think not too many years ago, a car drove in the pond off of Blue Bell Road.
Look, I, I understand that there could be, there could be a series of, of circumstances that we could, we could come up with, we can envision, we could speculate, many different things could happen. And I think what we have to go by is, you know, what's a reasonable expectation, and not that cars will be driving into the pond on, with regularity, I think we have to expect that was an accident. And I think we have to expect that if further, more diligent monitoring is what the board feels should happen in this area where the, where the panels are located, I think that could potentially be an appropriate condition. Okay, I hope that addresses your comment.
All right.
Well, the other part of that, too, I think there was a question about if the fence was going to be around the installation. Where do, where do we define that? And running it through, you know, if this board conditions a fence being put around, where would it go? The pond or at, at, at the wood line? And if it's only around the section that's in Franklin, you know, is, is that going to be an effective? I question whether it would be an effective deterrent no matter what.
My personal opinion is there should be a fence around the whole place, there always should have been a fence around the whole place. Okay? Not just for the solar panels. I mean, if this was, we were approving, if I was on the board, if it was approving this bit at the beginning, I would have requested a fence around the whole place, at the start.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Now, I have an opportunity to say.
I, I understand what, what you're saying. I, I, I don't agree it's necessarily going to be as effective as, as you may perceive it to be. If, if people insist on getting in, I don't know that that's the most effective deterrent. I think the monitoring would, could potentially be a more effective deterrent if the board is inclined to require that as a condition.
And also, you said in your report that there's a guard there eight hours a day?
On the weekend.
So what about the other 16 hours a day?
It's eight hours a day. So the other 16 hours a day, there's not a guard. But again, you know, with, with additional...
However many hours during the week after operation starts there, after that.
Right, right, understood. So I think, again, if that goes to the monitoring issue, I think that, that could address your concern. Thank you.
All right. Here's the testimony. And thanks for sharing this, obviously, safe, security, you should, it's like, people head in, so.
Can I add one more comment, please? And to that, I had, that fly was over here before. I'm glad he's over by you.
He's been playing me all night.
The, I, I...
However many hours during the week after operations start there, stop there.
Right. Understood. So I think, again, if that goes to the monitoring issue, I think that, that could address your concern.
All right. Here's the testimony. And things concerned is obviously, safety, security, it's like people head in.
Can I add one more comment, please, and to that? I had, that fly was over here before. I'm glad he's over by you.
He's been playing me all night.
The, I think we would like to specifically offer putting additional security cameras right at the location of the pole where the inverter is located, and have those cameras actively, you know, monitored. So I think if you would like to consider that as part of the mitigating measures to be taken.
What, 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
You know, they could be, they could be monitored in terms of if there's motion, you know, there could be an alert to, you know, to activate someone's attention, to see what's happening. And for, there could be protocols in place for steps to be taken if activity was alerted to you. Like a ring doorbell. If somebody comes up to the porch and takes a package, there is an alert. So we can install that type of security measure at the inverter pole to specifically observe the area where the panels are located so that, you know, we could be alerted to the presence of anybody on the site in that specific location. Since that's what's specifically before us today, I think, you know, that it makes sense to specifically look at that area of the property. And so I would offer that as a proposed condition if the board's amenable to accepting that.
Do you still have, if something's damaged, how long before something may be aware that something's happened here then?
I think that we would immediately alert the solar company, and they'd have to send-
How? We'd alert how? We'd find out if somebody had to go 100 feet offshore to the solar panels?
How long does it take to replace a panel? Give me one second, please.
How long does it take to replace a panel? Not to replace it, we'd be aware that something's happened.
There's an alert. You already have?
But he really wants to know that it's brown goose, so he's not told by-
The goose.
Not told by, always.
Right. So apparently, the system on the panels itself will immediately alert somebody if anything goes wrong. That alert is immediate. I'm talking apples to oranges about monitoring people entering the site.
So they go offline?
There's, they go offline, there's an alert sent to the, to the solar company, and they know immediately if something is wrong with the system. Geese or any other thing happening, there's an immediate alarm that sets the chain of events into place to let them know. So as soon as possible, as, you know, the system will be down if there's damage to it until it can be repaired. And obviously, it's in everyone's interest to get it repaired immediately.
They come out and do maintenance, or they go row out there to do these things every time they do maintenance?
To do observations, so they go out and take a boat?
Throw out?
Yes. They go out on the water to inspect. It's like floating, you know, you go out on floating docks to look at them. They go out in the water.
Yeah, there's three variances. One for being an accessory use, one for the commercial not being allowed, and for two uses on the property. If you thought that one was not met and the other one was, and if not, you can do it all together. I think they were very similar as far as my explanation.
I would like to make a motion to approve with additional security. 24-hour monitoring. Seven days a week. So the use range for accessories, solar, the use range for commercial solar, right? Two principal uses on the, on the property?
Right.
And waiver of defense. And monitoring 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
That would be the monitoring be reviewed by someone? By way of cameras. It alerts some, someone to immediately respond, I think, otherwise it's a good.
I mean, they've got to come up with something just again, worried about kids, worried about kids, you got to, you got to monitor it properly, just like those growth facilities.
And you got to monitor the solar panels, and not the-
So it has to be approved by probably our police department, I would say. It has to be reviewed by them.
Okay.
Any other amendments, any other?
Regular water testing?
It's got to be approved by the, our police department.
So you can approve. So just to be clear, so I can have it on record, it's a motion to approve with additional security, whether it's 24 hours, seven days a week monitoring by a system that is approved by Franklin Township Police?
Correct. All right, is a motion, or a second? Second by Enzi Gaitano.
Okay. Mr. Iglesias?
Yes? Has there been an operation before? They want to add energy to the plant. I don't see it now.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yeah.
Mr. Gaitano?
Yes.
Mr. Hamer?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
And Chairman Greifert?
Yes, I think this is a great place to put, put solar, and I like the idea that community, solar is going to help the people that are less fortunate and can't afford it. It's a good idea.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next caller again is CB 2309, Michael Ramsey.
How are you? Michael Ramsey, 104 Dutch Row Road, Monroeville, New Jersey. I'm sorry?
Play the board, but you're-
Oh, I'm trying to do a minor subdivision in, in Franklinville. 86 Sunny Hill, I've Franklinville. The property is the only property that goes from one street to the next street. All the properties in that area are already cut in half. Mine's the only one that goes from street to street. I'd like to cut it in half to where I could build one the other half. It'd be just like all the other houses in that area.
What's on the street that goes to?
Lakeview.
Lakeview.
Yeah, it's the only property on Lakeview and Sunny Hill that goes from street to street. All the other properties have already been cut in half.
Hopefully, they'll have the plan to show us. Okay. So you want to create another lot?
Yes.
Can I tell you something about like two residents on one piece of property?
Yes.
Mobile home or something?
Yeah, there's a mobile home and a house on it as it sits now.
How did that happen?
You got to, you got to tell me. I don't know. I bought it that way. I got a CO for both dwellings.
Do you have one septic?
One septic, if I'm not mistaken. I never found the second one. If there's a second one, I don't know.
You don't-
And it is a cesspool.
You don't live there?
No.
It's a rental property?
Yes.
Registered as a rental property with the township?
Yes.
So one dwelling would be on Sunny Hill, and the other one would be on Lakeview? Or is it both? You have a property in back of the current, but it's not, you have to remove the trail?
I'm not 100% sure what I'm going to do, whether I'm going to build a house, or move the mobile home, and then separate the two. You know, I'm, I'm open there.
Living in the mobile home right now?
Yes.
So you're right now both properties?
Yes. I got a CO for both properties.
The variances are because right now, you're, it's going to be two undersized lots when he does this. Maybe undersized an area and undersized frontage. So you're going to have a half a size, a lot half the size with two residences on it.
Then a rental one?
The other one vacant.
These were to get to the back.
No, no, no.
Does that have a room on the other one?
No, no, it'll be, it'll be road frontage on Lakeview and Sunny Hill. Like I said, it's the only lot that goes from street to street.
Right, so it's a non-conforming lot, but every other lot on that road seems-
Every other lot on both of those roads are-
Yeah. Taking out the, the mobile home there. It's not on the plan.
It is. It's listed as trailer.
Concrete trailer, and there's a big shed over top of the property.
It's like the one shed's on the top of the property.
The one shed's on somebody else's property a little bit? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem. You're shrinking this thing down, you guys.
But how, how, how long have you owned this property?
I think I bought it in 17.
I just can't understand how they, you could have two residents on one piece of property and one septic.
I don't know nothing about, I like, I like the idea, but that's why I bought it. And, you know, so, so when I went to the township, they came out and they, you know, they went over and they said, I got to do this, this, and this. And I got two COs. I don't know-
You realize if you're subdivided, you're going to have to put in another septic.
Well, I'd like to put in two septic, because like, it has a cesspool now, so I'd like to put in two septic systems, you know, legitimate, you know, septic systems.
But you're also going to have to move the trailer off that property.
Onto the other property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or build a house. I'm, do you need to know that right this minute? But that's what I'm shooting for, either-
I think it's pretty important, because I think what's happening is you have half the size of the lot with-
We don't want four houses.
No, 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 no.
So I think it's important to know what's going to happen with that trailer.
Well, it's either going to be the trailer.
Isn't there an ordinance now in the town, you can't put a trailer on a piece of property, right? But if we really don't, you have to move the trailer on another lot, when you can't put trailers on lots.
Correct. I think- But it's already there.
You say about your lot, if we make a second lot.
Make a second lot, you can't.
We can't tell you to move that trailer to the second lot because you're not allowed to have trailers in Franklin Township.
Correct.
I think you want some septic, you got to get a trailer.
Right. And in addition to the lot area and the lot width, we also have a density issue. And that's the real reason he's here. It's a D variance.
Right.
You're, you're allowed to have one unit, one dwelling unit for every acre and a half. So he's trying to create one lot that's going to be, help me here. One lot's going to be .86 acres, and the other lot's going to be .92. So he's going to create two non-conforming lots. And not only lot area, but lot density. Density's the real issue here. He's over on density the way he exists right now. Right? With the house and the trailer, and the lot not subdivided.
So you cut it in half, you have half the area, now you're at double the density.
Exactly.
Yeah, but isn't, isn't every other house in that area the same?
Every other house is similar in that area. And that's, that's, that's his argument, that he's going to try to be-
They have a mobile home.
He's going to try to meet the neighborhood for his new lot, right?
Yeah, but he's asking to move.
Yeah, if I, if I move the mobile home over, it's going to be just conforming with every other lot.
Which brings us back to that you're not allowed to plant a mobile home on a lot, right?
Well, how about if I moved the house over?
Well, really, you need to do that.
So you, you see what I'm saying? So you would say it's okay for me to move the house, but not the mobile home, which is already there? I'm asking, I'm asking to possibly move the mobile home.
It's definitely a sticky situation.
We cannot possibly, it's going to be something definite over.
I mean, the ideal thing is you have a house on each lot. Even though it's undersized, you'd still be getting relief.
Yeah.
Still getting relief. You'd be matching the neighborhood, and you'd be eliminating a non-conforming use, which is the trailer on the property.
Right.
So if, 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 if the applicant is asking to subdivide the property, remove the trailer from the one new lot, and, and create a vacant lot that he can put another house on, that, that's something you should know in considering the variances for lot width, lot area, and lot density.
Or you leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is, or you don't like the idea of me moving the mobile home over?
You can't, you can't, you can't. If you have a mobile home on a piece of property right now, you can put a mobile home back on it. But-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Say that again?
If you have a mobile home on a piece of property right now, on a lot, you can bring another mobile home and then put it there. Okay? But you're creating a new lot, so now you can't move that mobile home onto that new lot.
So you're saying I could move that mobile home off and put a new one on there?
No, no.
Mobile home, same footprint.
Same footprint. You'd have to move that house.
So, so I'm hearing two different things here.
Because he wasn't doing the subdivision, but- Correct. If he wasn't here before this board-
Right.
And his mobile home burned down, he'd be allowed to replace that mobile home since it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition.
Don't even mind if it burns down.
But, 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 mobile homes wear out.
Bring another mobile home.
You don't, right.
And what you could do now, if it was just the mobile home.
Correct. But when you're creating a new lot, you're not allowed to move a mobile home onto a new lot or put a new one on. So keep what you have, or subdivide, your inverter mobile home, and build a new house on Lakeview. I think that's only, that's reasonable, fair, fair.
Well, I don't know, because the, the mobile home is on its lot.
With the house.
With the house. So if the mobile home stays on that same property, and we cut it in half, I don't, I don't know why that would be a problem.
Because you're doubling, you're more than doubling the density again.
You're at extreme lot density now. You cut that square, put it to that lot in half.
It's already on there. We got two-
It's not on, it's just one big lot.
We got two houses on something this big. If-
You know, cut that in half and keep the same two houses on it.
It's still this big.
It's not that big. If you cut it in half, you make it two lots, and two property lots.
So, but it's still two houses on the same amount of ground.
Not true.
You make another lot.
Part of deck of cards, and cut it in half, and double the amount of cards. If I had two ants on one and cut it in half, that's, I have double amount of ants on that deck of cards. It's creating a much denser-
Right, right now, I have two homes with one cesspool.
What's your acreage of the lot right now?
I don't know what, I don't know what it is.
1.77 acres.
What I want to do, what I want to do is separate them and have two septic systems. You know, it's still just as much ground, and they're not going to be on top of each other. So it's going to be better for, it's got to be better for the ground if I have legitimate septic systems.
I think if you want both your house and your lot, you're not going to be able to subdivide. The house and the drill, you're not going to be able to subdivide.
Not going to be able to say right now.
So if you want, you want, we either want to create another lot, either the house has to go or the trailer has to go.
And you have the ability to build a new lot on Lake, a new house on Lakeview?
On Lakeview.
Two lots, two houses, no mobile home.
Two houses.
Two lots, two houses, one frontage on each street, and no mobile home.
So you're saying it's okay to have two houses on that same piece of property, but-
Not true.
But it's still on the same piece of property is what I'm saying, from Lakeview to Sunny Hill. It's still the same piece of property. It ain't like, that ain't like if I build a house, now that, now the ground's getting any bigger. You know, so if I-
But if you put a fence between it- But if you put a fence between the two, especially cut it in half, you're not, it's not the same piece of, what you're trying to do is make two lots out of one.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm doing is spreading it out, so I'm going to have two legitimate septic systems.
I'm missing your point.
Yeah.
Well, right now, the mobile home and the house, I believe, are on the same septic system.
Let's forget about septic for a second, because that really doesn't impact our decision here. But it's a good point, you know, to make the environment better. So right now on this piece of property, you have two dwellings. Your proposal is to cut the lot in half and add, and at the same time add a third dwelling.
No.
Okay, that's where I'm missing it.
No, no, no. I don't want to add a third dwelling on this piece of property. It's either going to be a house or that mobile home's going to be moved.
So, so the movement of the mobile home is off the table. So it's got to be a house. I think what I'm hearing the board saying is-
You're hearing correctly.
The board, the mobile home's got to go in order to get, grant this subdivision.
Draw this application and leave it the way it is.
Or leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So what's my next move? Can I think about it, or how's that work? Or if I do it, I just got to re-
Come back.
I'm sorry?
You can think about it and come back, right?
Michael, we don't vote on it. Yeah, if you want to postpone it, I mean, considering, you could do that.
Yeah, if you would, let me postpone it. So, but you're pretty adamant, if I, if I'm going to subdivide it, the mobile home's got to go.
We're not pretty adamant.
That's, that's it.
That's the way it's got to go.
According to the ordinance, the way it's written, you cannot have a lot, a new lot, and take a mobile home and place it on it. That's what they're trying to explain to you.
But I could move the house to the new lot?
Yes.
You could. According to them.
As crazy as it sounds. You guys hear what you're saying? I can move the house.
Why would you do that?
There are those rules.
I really, we're not making, we're actually making two new lots. They're both new.
Right.
So now, since they're both new, you can't have a trailer on either one.
Correct.
Good point.
Okay, let me postpone it if you would.
Okay. What's the date of our next meeting?
Well, if we don't think action, come back and-
We've got to reapply.
We've got to reapply.
Well, Dave, if he wants to reapply, it'd be easier if he just makes a decision. Postponed it.
Well, we can postpone it if they don't make your decision by then, then you have to reapply.
Okay, so, so I'm going to postpone it?
If anyone here from the public is interested in the application, we have to let them know when you're coming back.
So let's open up the public. I make a motion, right Dan? Second. All in favor, aye. Is anyone here in the public that'd be heard of this application? There are no geese on the property. Where's Ralph?
I don't know about no geese.
Where's Ralph?
I make a motion.
Ralph's still there.
By Anthony Guytono. All in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, public portion is closed. He's asking for a postponement. Are we going to make him reapply?
No, I think he's got to get back to us that you're going to let the secretary know you're withdrawing the application before the next meeting, or come back the next meeting. But you pretty much know where they stand. Either you're going to-
I got to make up my mind, I'm ready to get rid of that mobile home.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I got to make up my mind.
Okay. So you're going to come back at the next meeting, let us know, and then they would vote on your application.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate it, guys.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So he doesn't need to reknow this?
Correct, correct. If he comes back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, there's all the applications, like resolutions.
So we have the Cave Grappling Club, we have Selco. I want to do JC Company separately. So you want to move on the Cave Grappling Club and Selco Partnership Horizon. Any questions on those?
No question. I make emotionally approve the grappling club.
Can you sign it?
All in favor? Aye opposed? Any extensions?
How about Selco Partnership Horizon Wireless?
I make the motion approving that. Look at my Richard Iglesias, second by Anthony Guytono for Selco. All in favor? Aye opposed? Next one is Dana.
So on JC Company LLC, it's important on this one that I verify, you all have had a chance, other than Dana, to review the resolution which was given to you in advance. I need for you to verify that it accurately reflects your findings, because there's a lot in there. And that's what I develop based upon the evidence and your comments and your vote. But it's your findings, so you need to tell me that you reviewed it and it does reflect your findings, and you don't want to make any changes to it. Or if you do, let me know that, so.
I reviewed it and it's perfectly reviewed. Everything's fine.
Rich?
All good. Yes.
Okay. Have a motion and the-
Motion to approve. Motion is approved. What's it called again?
JC Company LLC.
Motion by Richard Iglesias, second by Anthony Guytono. All in favor? Aye opposed?
Do you want a roll call or not?
Just do a roll call on it, it's one we want to make sure we're very-
Okay.